Ladies and gentlemen, it is a pleasure to look out the audience and see so many fine citizens of the state of Pearland on a very special occasion. I tell you, if you've seen the agenda for tonight, it's very short. Mostly shaking hands, most of it is greeting, and most of it, when we get through doing part of the official part, we have a few snips and snares and puppet tailles out in the audience, lobby out there. We'll have a few things to drink and a few things to eat. Let me open a meeting, a special council meeting, the City Council of Pearland for Monday, June 17th, 2019. Moving in our agenda to item number one, Councilmember Carbone, would you please present this for our consideration?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration Possible Action Resolution R. 2019-150, resolution order of the City Council of the city of Pearland, Texas canvassing the returns and declaring the results of the general runoff election held in the city of Pearland, Texas on June 8th, 2019. And that said election resulted in the following vote totals: Luke Orlando, 1,660 votes, 52.17%. And Darryl Eisenberg, 1,522 votes, 47.83%. The City Council of the city of Pearland, Texas hereby officially and affirmatively declares that the results as shown above are the real and true results of the election held on June 8th within the city of Pearland. The candidate elected to serve as member of the council position number one is Luke Orlando. Said party is hereby declared duly elected to said respective office, subject to taking of their oath of office and statement of elected officers as provided by the laws of the state of Texas. So moved.
Second.
We have a force of counsel position of business. We have a motion. Do you have a second? We do have a second. Any discussion from the council at this point? Madam Secretary, we do have motion second on the floor.
Councilmember Carbone, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Motion passed, 4-2-0.
Okay. Moving in my agenda to item two, Mayor's issuance of certificate of election to Luke Orlando, Councilmember position number one. You read this text. This is, let me show you, this is a certificate for framing of the mayorhead of the county of Portland, Otis Mayor, and we're taking gifts from people who'd like to help us. See the dad about this. A certificate of election in the name and by the authority of the city of Pearland, Texas. This is to certify that a general election runoff election held on the eighth day of June 8th, 2019, Luke Orlando was duly elected, council member position number one. And in testimony thereof, I have here to sign my name because the seal of the city of Pearland to be fixed on the 17th day of June 8th, 2017. And I did sign it, Tom Reed, which is what I used to do, Mayor of Pearland. Let me present this to you and to the audience here. Let's get a picture. Thanks all of you for being here. You really did well.
As Mayor Protim, I will present the next item on the agenda, the administration of the oath of office by Judge Greg Hill to Luke Orlando, councilmember position number one. Greg Hill?
All right. You ready?
Yes, sir.
Make it official.
Let's do it.
Stand this way, that way everybody can see you. If you would, raise your right hand. All right. I state your name.
I, Luke Orlando.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of.
The office of council member position number one for the city of Pearland.
The office of council member one for the city of Pearland.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and the laws of the United States.
One is in the lobby trying to get ready to come in, and two are absent from the council
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congrats.
tonight. But we'll put it to work between now and then, so don't you worry. Moving to item number four on our agenda, Consideration Possible Action regarding the election of Mayor Protim. Since two of our members of the council are absent and will not be back for at least a week, we move that we transfer this to the next council meeting and address it at that point. And at this point, immediately after the reelection and the official swearing-in, the city council will recess, which I shall do, and we'll all adjourn to the lobby and have a few Snicky Stacks and a little something to drink. In honor, here's Madam Shepard.
Ladies and gentlemen, let me open a joint public hearing, City Council of City Peril Land for Monday, June the 17th, 2019. It's scheduled at least 6:30, but we've had a more important duty, and that is seating and recognizing a new city council member. Moving into the agenda, call to order, purpose of the hearing, Mr. Chairman, the county commission.
Thank you, Mayor.
Purpose of the hearing.
This is a request of Kevin Cole, applicant on behalf of Great Barrier LLC, Series D owner. For approval of a zoning change from General Commercial District, G C, to Plan Development District, P D, on approximately 0.43 acres. General location is 3718 3804, 3808 East Walnut Street.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to, for the matter of public record, state that I'm not going to be able to participate in this discussion. I advised one of the applicants on this prior to being on council. While it doesn't meet the ethical ordinance, to prevent me from being involved, I think it's fair, it's most fair to the citizens that I do not. I would normally recuse myself completely by pulling out of the room, but since we do not have, we would not have quorum if I was to do that. I will stay, and I will not involve myself in discussions, and I will abstain from any vote.
Let the record reflect that we're talking about item, item number one. There are three, there are three sections, three separate joint public hearings in this particular session. And you join section one, Trent? We've got items one, two, or three. All three of them.
Just the first one, Mayor, just the first item.
Okay, for the first one, which I'm leading up to right now. We just had the reading of the purpose of the hearing. Moving into our agenda, item number one, application information case summary, staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. I'll go ahead and introduce the rules of our public hearing tonight before I get to the first case. Each public hearing will be conducted in the following format. The first thing will be called order. The second will be the staff report, then it will be followed by staff presentation. I'm sorry, by the applicant presentation. Then the applicant presentation will be followed by the public comment section. The city council will open the public hearing. If you are interested in speaking for any of the cases that we have tonight, just go ahead and complete a speaker's card and give it to the recording secretary. And when you are called up to speak, please come forward to the microphone, it will be located there. And please state your name and address for the record, and please keep your comments brief and to the point, and within a three-minute timeframe. After the public hearings, the city council will convene and make final decisions on the special, the special condition, special conditional use permits, I'm sorry. And they will be voting to approve the request as presented, approve with conditions, or deny the request, and the last could be tabling the item. We have three zone cases tonight on the joint public hearing. These three cases will be, the first and second readings of those cases will be in the regular city council meeting in July. And we do have three conditional use permits tonight, and these will be followed after the joint public hearing. The first item that we have tonight is Zone 19-00012. As stated before, this is a request for a zone change from the General Commercial District to Plan Development District on approximately half an acre. To be incorporated as an addendum into the Baker's Landing Plan Development District.
Ladies and gentlemen, let me open a joint public hearing, City Council of City of Pearland, for Monday, June the 17th, 2019. It's scheduled at least 6:30, but we've had a more important duty, and that is seating and recognizing a new city council member. Moving in the agenda, call to order, purpose of the hearing, Mr. Chairman, the planning commission.
Thank you, Mayor.
Purpose of the hearing?
This is a request of Kevin Cole, applicant on behalf of Great Barrier LLC, Series D owner, for approval of a zoning change from General Commercial District, G C, to Plan Development District, P D, on approximately 0.43 acres. General location is 3718 3804, 3808, East Walnut Street.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to, for the matter of public record, state that I'm not going to be able to participate in this discussion. I advised one of the applicants on this prior to being on council. While it doesn't meet the ethical ordinance, to prevent me from being involved, I think it's fair, it's most fair to the citizens that I do not. I would normally recuse myself completely by pulling out of the room, but since we do not, we would not have quorum if I was to do that, I will stay, and I will not involve myself in discussions, and I'll abstain from any vote.
Let the record reflect that we're talking about item, item number one, there are three, there are three sections, three separate joint public hearings in this particular session. And you join, section one, Trent, we've got items one, two, or three. All three of them.
Just the first one, Mayor, just the first item.
Okay, for the first one, which I'm leading up to right now, we just had the reading of the purpose of the hearing. Moving into our agenda, item number one, application information case summary, staff report.
Thank you, Mayor, good evening. I'll go ahead and introduce the rules of our public hearing tonight before I get to the first case. Each public hearing will be conducted in the following format. The first thing will be called order, the second will be the staff report, then it will be followed by staff presentation, I'm sorry, by the applicant presentation. Then the applicant presentation will be followed by the public comment section. The city council will open the public hearing. If you are interested in speaking for any of the cases that we have tonight, just go ahead and complete a speaker's card and give it to the recording secretary. And when you are called up to speak, please come forward to the microphone, it'll be located there, and please state your name and address for the record, and please keep your comments brief and to the point, and within a three-minute timeframe. After the public hearings, the city council will convene and make final decisions on the special, the special condition, special conditional use permits, I'm sorry, and they will be voting to approve the request as presented, approve with conditions, or deny the request, and the last could be tabling the item. We have three zone cases tonight on the joint public hearing. These three cases will be, the first and second readings of those cases will be in the regular city council meeting in July. And we do have three conditional use permits tonight, and these will be followed after the joint public hearing. The first item that we have tonight is Zone 19-00012. As stated before, this is a request for a zone change from the General Commercial District to Plan Development District on approximately half an acre, to be incorporated as an addendum into the Baker's Landing Plan Development District. The subject property is located, subject parcels are located at 3718, 3804, and 3808, East Walnut Street. Staff has now received any correspondence in support or opposition to the request. The design plan for the Baker's Landing Plan Development includes single-family town home residential uses with open space and recreational features. The plan also includes a six-acre corner designated as a general business sub-district. The proposed rezoning aims to incorporate these three parcels into the general business sub-district of the Baker's Landing Plan Development. The subject property is surrounded by the Baker's Landing Plan Development from the west and south sides, and by all-town side, mixed-use zoning from the north, and the general commercial zoning from the east. The subject property is designated on the future land use map as village district, which is intended to promote for mixing of uses, including residential, retail, office, public, and semi-public uses. This slide here presents a summary of the code conformance table. The proposed zone change conforms to the policies of the comprehensive plan, the future land use plan, and has access to city utilities. The property is currently unplanted, and Walnut Street is designated on the thoroughfare plan as a major collector to be widened. This slide here shows that the proposed zone change meets the criteria for approval. The request was reviewed by the city development review committee. Staff recommends approval of the zone change for, from general commercial to plan development with a base for general business, and to be incorporated as an addendum into the Baker's Landing Plan Development District. That concludes the staff report, and I will be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, moving in our agenda to applicant presentation.
Sure.
Yes, for the record, Kevin Cole, 3808 Houston Lake Drive, here in Pearland, Texas, 77581. And I'd also like to introduce Ms. Karen Jantsch. She's one of the Bakers, as part of Baker's Landing, and they've got their other partnership name, which is what it's under, Great Barrier LLC. This process of adding these three lots, it's real simple, these were three just excess lots up and down Walnut, that in and of themselves would be very difficult to do anything with, as staff mentioned, just plating of the property. These lots, if they were left to develop by themselves, they would have the front 35-foot setback, the rear 20-foot setback, as well as the side yard setbacks, would leave each one of these lots almost without the ability to ever develop. So by incorporating those into Baker's Landing, and into what we may do with the property, it'll allow the property to be completely replatted, all those setbacks go away, and actually open up Walnut to a little bit more development. On, we actually initiated this process, the city owned two of those lots, the two on either side. We bought the middle lot from a family out of Alvin, and we initiated by asking if they were available for sale. The city went through the proper channels to find out if they were excess property, and ultimately put them on the market for sale. Part of that listing agreement also required whoever purchased the property to rezone them into the Baker's Landing P D, which is exactly what we're doing. So for the record, also want to make sure that the city is, you know, just documented that we're following through with what the listing agreement said within the timeframe that it called for. So we're here tonight, we'll answer any questions that you might have regarding the development. I think everybody's seen the housing, and I think the townhomes are about to start as we speak, but D.R. Horton has done a tremendous job with the, with the single-family residential, and it's kind of exciting to see it finish up and let us get started on the, on the commercial side. Thank you.
That testimony wrapped up, let's move to item C, which is staff wrap-up on this project?
No more comments.
Okay, moving in my agenda to item number two, person wishing for or against the proposed request, and I ask Councilmember Perez to check that out.
Thank you, Mayor. Are there any members of the audience like to speak either for or against this proposed zone change? Second time, any members of the audience like to speak either for or against this proposed zone change? Third and final time, any members of the audience like to speak either for or against this proposed zone change? No contestants, Mayor.
Okay, that information in the record, let's move to item number three, which is an opportunity for the council, the planning commission, and the staff to discuss the progress that we have made and what we have planned. Moving in our agenda to council, Councilmember Alondo. Okay, Councilmember Reed.
No comment, Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Moore. And Councilmember Perez will not testify, and Councilmember Owens.
No comment, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, with that information lopped up, Planning and Zoning Commission, Mr. Chairman.
Mayor, you have any comments?
Not at this time.
Really?
No comments.
Mayor, there's no further comments.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Moving to third item, is the staff discussion, comments at this point?
No, no more comments.
All right, move to item number four, and I will adjourn this standalone, Dr. Public Hearing, which is a joint public hearing process. Moving in our agenda to the second public hearing, Mr. Chairman, would you give us the proposed purpose of the hearing?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request by Chad Tuman, Sideline Investments LLC, applicant on behalf of THV Properties LLC, owner for approval of a zoning change from single-family estate district RE to single-family residential four, district R4, on approximately 79.1925 acres. The general location is the 6700 block of McKeever Road, County Road 100.
I complete your report, okay. Moving in our agenda to item number one, application information case summary, item A, a staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. As I stated before, this is a request for approval of a zoning change for two parcels of land totaling approximately 79.1925 acres, from a single-family state district, also known as RE, to single-family residential R district. The purpose of the rezoning is to accommodate a residential subdivision containing approximately 289 residential lots affronting on public streets. The subject parcels are located at 67 Block of McKeever Road, also known as County Road 100. Staff has now received any correspondence in support or opposition to the request. This property was annexed by the city in 2001, and it's currently undeveloped. The subject property is also surrounded by single-family homes to the north, which are located in the Pearland ETJ, and undeveloped tracks to the east, west, and south, and they're all zoned single-family state district. The subject property is designated on the future land use map as suburban residential, which is intended to promote low-density residential districts such as the residential estate RE, suburban residential SR 1500, and suburban residential SR 12, zoning districts. The proposed zoning classification of, or the requested zoning classification of residential R4 is considered higher in density, and therefore is inconsistent with the future land use map. This slide here present a preliminary layout of the subdivision, which contains, as I said, 289 residential lots. And this slide here shows a comparison of the area standards of the two, of the current zoning versus the proposed, and as you can see, I highlighted that the minimum lot size for the current zoning is approximately 21,000, 21,780. With the requested zoning, it will be minimum 5,000 square feet. These are kind of the major differences. Also, the minimum lot width for RE is 120, for the requested one will be only about 50 This slide here shows a summary of the conformance, the code conformance table. The proposed zone change does not conform to the policies of the comprehensive plan, the future land use map, and has no access to city utilities. The property is currently unplanted, and I also want to mention that McKeever is designated on the thoroughfare plan as a major thoroughfare to be acquired. Moving on, this slide shows how the zone change, shows the proposed zone change does not meet the criteria for approval, therefore staff recommend, does not recommend approval of the requested zone change. The request was reviewed also by the city development review committee. The engineering department has raised a number of potential issues with this rezoning, including the potential impact of the proposed density on the existing roadways, and availability of city utilities within the area. Engineering department has also indicated that any capital improvement projects must be addressed through a development agreement with the developer. That concludes the staff report, and we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving in our agenda to item number B, let's give the applicant an opportunity to make a presentation. Thank you for being here next.
Good evening, I'm Chad Tuman, 7918 Broadway, Pearland, Texas. The property we're talking about, first of all, I'm not here to sell you guys this. If you guys, you guys will be deciding if we pursue this or not. This is a, it's a tough piece, and if you go back to their slides, it does have a lot of hills to climb. So I was gonna just start by telling you the problems with the track, and first of all, the area is not the best area, the land cost, since it is in the section of land where Massey Oaks is coming in, anytime a developer moves in, it drives the land costs up, so we're having to pay for it. With the looming economy and the bad roads, it's not in Pearland School District, and there are no utilities, and I believe all the slides confirmed all of that before. The other problem is to get utilities there is, just to get the water line there, is it's 9,800 feet of water line, and the right-of-way has to be acquired, and the water line has to put in. It's $2.9 million, and those numbers are straight out of the development agreement for Massey Oaks, so it's not something that I just dreamed up. It also will incur 1.9 million in impact fees. All to be, all those costs would be spread out over 78 acres, so you can see, that's a tough, tough battle already. Benefits to the city, if you do go back to those challenges, the city will be requiring us to put in McKeever, also requiring us to build the street there, that was all discussed in the pre-development meetings. To bring that water line in, the city is planning to expand veterans and also McKeever, so we will be acquiring the right-of-way for the city to expand the road, which would be a benefit to the city. You also have a water line, you'll have fire hydrants, you'll have additional sewer down McKeever. We will also, in this cost is in the Massey Oaks Development Agreement. How it figures in the Massey Oaks Development Agreement is, they're not going to put this in until they had 500 houses built. So from my understanding with their engineer, their PD was approved over two years ago, they're still not acquiring right-of-way, and they have done nothing but preliminary engineering. So by the time they actually get everything on the ground, 500 houses, you're looking at probably, I'm guessing at eight years from now. So we'll assist them. So what does that mean to the city? Is that this water line is a loop for them, so if their development goes in, their water line's a long dead end, and you guys are all gonna get the calls about the water that doesn't smell good. So by us boosting, our coming in along with them, we'll be providing that loop, that water line, so it'll keep that from happening. Plus, we'll actually be, the plan's in place, so we're doing, even though we're not asking to do a PD, we're conforming to their PDs, what we're doing. So that will be a benefit, and we'll also be assisting Massey Oaks in the cost of it. I mean, if we're gonna do this, then they don't, so I think that'll help get them down the road. We've, in, I don't know if you can go back to the slide that shows the track? Well, that's not the track, but if you look, we've got side access, the two properties on either side is the Ordno Track, I've been in contact with him, we're trying to stub out on the sides to, and try to plan accordingly with, with those guys to help them out, to make sure that what we're planning doesn't affect them. So far, it's been favorable. If you see the little shape on the side, that's a drill site, we're working to get that taken off, or moved, or reshaped, right now, it looks like the state of Louisiana. We conform, and what we're doing is, we're not looking to do all R4, and, you know, I'll go on to say right here, right now, in front of all you guys, that we're looking to do a 30% of R4, the rest will be R3. We're doing a three-lot combination of 50, 60, and 70. I can tell you that we're not gonna do any more than 30% of the 50s, which I think is the, the, the big concern. The other thing in the Massey Oaks PD that we're also, we will be conforming to is the masonry. When we discussed with staff, you know, their concerns, I think Massey Oaks, Massey Oaks had to do a 90% front masonry and a 75% rear, we're gonna conform to that, we can write into our CCRs, it's no problem at all. Honestly, the builder pays for it, so, so that's, that's our, that's our mountain to climb, and, I mean, there, I guess that's it, so. Guess that's all I got to say.
Good, appreciate your comments. Moving in our agenda to item number C, staff wrap-up on this?
No more comments.
Sorry. Actually, we do have comments, yes. So one thing to remember, council, this is a zone request for the land, so all of the things that were mentioned are not a guarantee, as we do not do conditional zone change applications here. So what is a guarantee is that the possibility for smaller lots is available with this R4 The, I'd like to engage our director of engineering to discuss some of the utilities, as that was a discussion point, just to get some further clarification on the timing and process for those.
Thank you, Martin. Mayor and council and Planning Zoning Commission, the, with regards to the Massey Oaks that was mentioned in terms of where they are in that process, they've been waiting to close on some financial agreements later this month, and they'll be processing and moving forward associated with the easements as required, necessary per the development agreement, moving that process forward. We have seen layouts for water, sewer, and roadway, and long storm drain with that as well, so they'll be moving forward with that in the coming near future. With regards to the water lines down veterans that were talked about, with regards to easements, it's only the easement that we'd be asking for, not the full right-of-way, that's the same as what's in the current Massey Oaks development, so we'd be looking at getting the easement associated with bringing water down. So we'd be looking at getting the easement associated with bringing water down Veterans or down that process to bring the property. With regards to the road that was mentioned, there would be that request to provide the dedicated portion of roadway that is necessary per the thoroughfare plan, and taking a look at that, construction of that half boulevard type section associated with that road, similar to what we're doing already with the development agreement with Massey Oaks. I believe that may answer the rest of the questions of the notes that I took from the statements made earlier from the applicant at this time.
I just want to add one quick note, that Massey Oak is a little bit different because it's a planned development, as you may all recall, as opposed to being just straight zoning. So this request tonight is a straight zoning from RE to R4. Massey Oaks is a planned development that has a combination of several zoning districts. So I just want to point out that distinction.
Thank you.
I can place your comments. Okay. Moving in our agenda to item number two, which is person sufficient to speak for or against the proposed request. I have Councilmember Perez to handle that item.
Thank you, Mayor. Are there any members of the audience that would like to speak either for or against this proposed zone change? Any members of the audience like to speak either for or against this proposed zone Third and final time, any members of the audience like to speak either for or against this proposed zone change? No contestants, Mayor.
Okay, moving in our agenda to item number three, which gives the council, the planning commission, and the staff an opportunity to make any wrap-up comments. So I'd like to say to Councilman, Councilmember Owens?
Just a couple of things, Chad, for you. Seems like from what you're talking about, it's pretty difficult on there. You're talking about, you say 289 lots, of course, and 30% on the R4s, which are the 50-foot, which would be 76, or roughly 76. But in order to come out whole, you're probably gonna have to have more than that, after you look at the cost that you're gonna go through. So I'm just kinda wondering, is it beneficial for you to even try to develop this land? But I know right now, you're just trying to change it to R4, so.
Yeah, we're just trying to change it to R4. I mean, is, in, I know some of the worry is that we can go and add more lots, and you know, would definitely be opening, open to some type of split zoning. It would not do that, maybe like half to half. So, you know, trying, trying to eliminate that risk or whatever. But the one thing it is, is once the water lines and the sewer lines come down, say if I walked out of here and got hit by a truck tomorrow, there's still, all the, and someone acquired it and they did do all R4 lots, which hopefully that's not gonna happen, like to see tomorrow. But there's so much acreage still left out there that, I think the reason this has not developed is because of the challenge. And I think we can do it, and again, we're not gonna do more than 30%. With the lot count we have, we can, we can make it work. But it is, it's a challenge. And I'll be honest with you, sometimes the best deal that you make is the deal that you don't do. So if this is gonna be a big, tough battle, I mean, I truly think this is a good, a good deal in regards to getting utilities in the city. The drawings, the engineering drawings, were they, were they actual, I mean, were they all preliminary drawings, or have you started receiving some?
Apparently, we've been reviewing them in terms of on preliminary, in terms of agreeing to layouts, locations, and water lines, et cetera, associated with the Massey Oaks property. So that, once their financial mechanism that they were trying to close on by the end of the month, first of next month, they'd be moving that much faster.
Gotcha, so all preliminary right now? But, so what do you, to answer your question, I think we can get it done with, with what we have.
Well, I'm not a big fan of R4, to be honest with you.
Yeah, oh, I know.
What roughly is seven and a half feet in between houses?
Yes, sir, I completely understand.
Yeah, and so it's just a manufacturer, nothing but rooftops for 79 acres.
Sure.
About what it amounts to.
Yeah, like I said, you know, we would be interested in maybe a split zoning, put them at the rear. We can't, at this point, with 78 acres to spread the cost out, we need at least a 30%. So, and that's tight.
Yeah, it seems like, you know, with that, and looking at 30% on the R4, I mean, the cost of the houses are gonna be abnormally high to be able to, I mean, you gotta recover your money, man.
We still have to compete in the market too, so, I mean. But I think we'll get a reasonable tax value, if that's what you mean.
Moving in our agenda?
Thank you, Mayor. So just one question, why did, why did you do this as a zone change versus a planned development? Where planned development would allow you to do some more things in there?
Because it is a tough deal. A planned development is a long road and an expensive road, and I don't know where I'm gonna end up at the end. So I don't wanna spend all my time and all my money on something that is already challenging if I'm gonna get, have to go down that road. So there's no interest in doing a planned development on this.
And so if I understood correctly, you're gonna basically invest $2.9 million into infrastructure as far as road and water lines to get to that area on top of paying 1.9 million in impact fees?
That's correct.
Okay.
I mean, there's, and if you, if you look at the number of acres that we're spreading the cost in, that's, that's why we have to do the 30%.
Okay, and so if, just to make sure I understood correctly, 30% for, you plan to do 30% R4, 50% R3, 60% R2, or do I have that backwards?
No, we're doing, that's, that's the current lot layout. It is gonna change a little bit because of the drilling site, if we can get that reshaped. If you look in the middle, you'll see that it creates an odd area of lots. So, but yeah, we, 30% R4, everything else will be 60s and 70s.
Okay.
Okay, Councilmember Perez?
Thank you, Mayor. First, the purpose record, and I have some, some business interests not related to this, no contracts are signed, but has nothing to do with this particular project. But I think it's useful for the purpose record to mention that. I do have a couple of questions for you with respect to this. So if we're, if we're looking at a mix essentially of densities, is there an aggregate density which you're trying to achieve? I mean, if you, you know, some R2s, some R3s, some 7,000, some 5,000, are you hoping to get like an average density of 6,000?
Yes, somewhere along those lines.
I mean, would you be open to an R3?
I need 30% of R4 to make this work.
Okay.
If, if we could do R3, I would've done R3. I've never done one R4 lot in Pearland. So if I, if I didn't need to do it here, I wouldn't.
So you feel like the density is gonna be somewhere between R4 and R3, enough to be able to spread profitability on there, to at least break even on the development and get mud reimbursement?
Yes, and the problem with the mud reimbursement is that mud reimbursement is based on the value that you put on the ground. And we will, with the value that's on the ground, we will exceed the reimbursement costs. And so basically, what I'm trying to tell you is that we will not be 100% reimbursed for all of this, because we'll exceed the amount that they, that they're allowed by TCEQ to reimburse us.
If, if, you're left here with the instruction of, in order to be able to get a mix of densities, that we would require a PD, would you move forward with the project?
No.
I would say generally, the RE is just, those, unfortunately, those lots just don't sell. I mean, I understand the purposefulness of the zone in general, but a half-acre lot's just, nobody, nobody buys half-acre lots, not on, not in any manner which is profitable. I think Ravenwood is a good example, was that they were, they were half-acre to acre lots, and it took about, I remember, Renee, you're in the audience, I think that was your development, it took about 15 years to get all those sold. So I don't disagree that the zoning, what's in the future land use zone, or land use plan is with respect to zoning, is just not a product that anyone will buy en masse. So you have to take a significant loss in order to be able to develop that initially and hope that you break even sometime in a half-generation. I'm not a huge fan of the R4, to be frank. You know, I, I trust what you're telling me, and I would lean towards a yes. I would much rather have a PD so we could ensure the mix. And I'm also conscious of the fact, we could, we could rezone it, allow you to move forward, and then you pull out of the project and we may be stuck with an R4 with somebody that I don't think has as much a history with us. I think.
You know, it seems as if this is a common problem, and I know a PD is, is a partial relief to this, but, you know, I don't know if there's another alternative to this, like, so if I'm telling you I'm gonna do 30% R4, can, I don't know if that could be put in a development agreement? I mean, you guys are gonna give us utilities, so we're gonna have to have a development agreement anyway. Or if you guys have something, if it's not in place now, something you can put in place in the future, where I can tell you I'm gonna do 30% without going through the whole PD process?
Lawrence, maybe a question for you. Would we be able to zone change it to R4 and then put in a development agreement, a, or Darren, would we be able to zone change it R4, but put in a max density or a percentage of 5,000 square in the development agreement, and then kind of do a, sort of a PD light?
Essentially, what, the problem with doing something like that is you end up with contract zoning, because they're getting the, keep getting the zoning designation they want, as long as we do this, or vice versa. And so contract zoning wouldn't be permissible. The only way we could do something like that would be through doing a planned development.
Yeah, we wouldn't be able to put in the development agreement a maximum amount of connections?
Actually, if the property is zoned to R4 and you did a development agreement afterwards, you could do something like that. But again, what, the zoning would have to come first, and then there's no guarantees at that point.
I think maybe, not speaking for the entirety of council, but, but I think what we could do is, if it's of, if it's of the mind of P&amp;Z to allow it to move forward and agree to the R4, and they give us a positive recommendation, it comes to council, it takes two readings, if the other council members are okay with it and we get a positive initial vote, we could potentially delay the final vote until you can come back to us and say, I'm, I've looked at the financials and I'm able to move forward. It gives you the security of knowing that you're gonna get the final vote, but we don't take the risk of putting this R4 zone on permanently and you not follow through on the project.
Sure. Well, again, I'm also open to split zoning, where you zone a certain portion of it, R4, if that would help too, so.
That could be an option. I mean, maybe, maybe that's something we do if the R4 fails, and you could go through it. I mean, I understand that the, I generally see PD as zone of last resort. You and I've had this conversation before. I think it's a, it's an oft misuse tool, and it, in, in our industry, it becomes a very nebulous thing, and you can pour a lot of money into it and still get a no. And it's not like a couple of thousand dollars, it's maybe a hundred thousand dollars. And it's just, I don't wanna put you through that if we're talking about some, if there's another tool available that allows you the security to move forward, but does not make us permanently risk having this in R4 and having a lesser developer come in and take advantage of that.
Sure.
That would be my suggestion.
Jim?
That's all I have, Mayor.
Councilmember Reed?
I mean, I think everything's kind of been said with respect to R4, just in general. So I, you know, I don't wanna beat a dead horse. I can appreciate you wanting to develop more, and, you know, you saw something in the development that, you know, probably warranted R4, but, you know, I'm not a fan of seven feet between homes. You know, obviously, I think a PD would be the way to go, but then I also understand the costs that are associated with it. So, you know, I'm interested in kind of hearing what P&amp;Z has to say, what their feedback is, and then revisiting.
Councilmember Orlando?
I have no further comments, Mayor.
All right. Moving to, excuse me, Planning Zone and Commission, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mayor. We'll start with Julie.
Sorry. I have a question regarding the notifications that went out. What is the existing right-of-way of McKeever Road? And my reason for asking is merely because it appears that notification went out to the property owners on three sides. If McKeever Road is wide enough, I can understand it not going to the properties across the street, but.
Okay, now that I know where your question's going.
Sure.
The property to the north is outside of the city limits.
Okay.
That's why notification didn't go the north.
Thank you. I have, I have no further comments. I think everything's been said, and I agree with, you know, the R4 comments.
I'm not a real big fan of the R4s either, and we just all need to keep in mind that we're zoning the property, not the development.
I don't have any objection to an R4. I think you sort of have to go with what people are asking for. But 78 acres of it all in the middle of that area, I'm not real certain of. I'm just uncertain as to what I want.
Well, I won't continue to beat the dead horse, but we have the option for a PD, also the option for a cluster development. You've done those before, or at least one of them that I know of. That's a little less of a process going through planning and zoning only for that cluster development. I'll be a no vote for a straight-up R4 vote. I'll just leave it there.
Chad, I do wanna, if you're gonna spend that much money for like utilities and stuff, is, if the planned development really just not feasible?
It's, it's a long, timely road and expensive road, and then again, you don't know where you're gonna end up. And again, it's already a challenge, so I don't wanna go through that process and end up with something that it's not gonna work. I don't wanna promise a bunch of things and not be able to do them. This is what it's gonna take, you're, to get this to work, if you say, if you guys say no, some, the next person that comes is gonna want a mix of lots like this. Massey Oaks has a mix of the R4 in it. It, it's what it takes, so, I mean, I, so, but if it's, if it's gonna be a long drawn-out process, it just makes it not worth it. It's already hard, so.
Do you not have to have, before you can do a cluster, you have to have it zoned?
It's zoned already now.
Zoned already now, but it's zoned for large lots.
Large lot.
Okay.
So cluster development is an option, correct? Jeff?
Correct, I was actually gonna bring that up during the staff wrap-up. An R4 cluster development plan would be 5.6 as a gross density over the whole development, 5.6 units per acre.
I think the comments overall from everybody is, straight R4 is, is not an option. I don't know how we would do a split zone tonight in the P&amp;Z meeting, because that would have to come back, correct? For splitting the property into two zones, or can we, could we do that?
Yes, sir.
As even an option?
That would have to come in as a, as a new application. Tonight's just the R4.
Yeah. That comes. That completes. Anybody else?
Could they table it and come back with a split?
We can always postpone.
The difficulty with the split zoning is you have to draw a line where the split is, and we don't know where that line is going to be. So if P&amp;Z were to attempt to do the split zoning, you'd just be randomly choosing a number. That may not work for Mr. Tooman and his development, and that may not work for the city at the end of the day. And you know, just assuming that you take the bottom third of the project, I'm sorry, maybe the top third of the project and say, this is going to be R3, well, that might be where he wants to put the detention. And if you put it at the bottom, well, that might be where he wants to put the detention as well. I don't know, and I don't know if Mr. Tooman knows where he wants to put that yet either. So you don't want to arbitrarily draw a line for the split zoning and then find out that that section can't be used for what you intended to use it, even if it was one-third of the development, which is where he, with 30% being where he needs the R4, so.
Thank you. And I'm in favor of a plan, whether it's a PD or a cluster development, coming back with a plan which would give you the 30, the number of R4 lots you need and give the city the, a good idea of what's coming. With R4, you can sell the property tomorrow and somebody else can come in and put maximum density on it, and I think that's what everybody's scared of. Any further comments? That completes our comments, Mayor.
I complete your comments, okay. Moving in our agenda to staff.
Mayor, let me ask one quick question, just because I brought up. With respect to a cluster, we'd end up with the same density, but the process would be we'd have to approve the zone change, then we'd have to subsequently approve the cluster. So there's an interim period where we could have an R4 with no cluster, and he could abandon the project and it's just, the zone has changed, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So I think balancing what I'm hearing from the developer and from what staff is telling me, there is a possibility that we could do the R4, enter into development agreements, make the final vote of the approval of the R4 contingent, maybe on having plans approved or 90% plans submitted, and most of the comments addressed, or have a development agreement in place where we cap the number of single-family connections for the water that forces kind of the density. It forces a less dense, a less dense development than R4, if that's a possibility. It avoids a PD completely, because I don't think we want to do a complete PD.
And I may be misunderstanding the cluster plan that Martin had mentioned earlier, but I don't think you do an R4 cluster plan. You would do an R2 or an R3 cluster plan, and then because of the allowance with the density, they can get a certain percentage of those lots at a smaller number. And what you could do, because a R3 or an R2 is less intense than an R4, is change it to an R2, being step one, the rezoning, and then put the cluster plan on top of that R2, which would allow the allowance to get the density that might have 30% at the R4 ratio.
And typically, when we've done, we've done these clusters in that fashion, we've allowed for an amenitized pond to count as some of the, some of the parkland, or some of, reduce some of the density, so you can actually end up with the same amount of lots as R4, because you're not eating up a whole lot of, is that possible? You end up getting the same amount of lots. Get a, you get a greater density, you get an R2 zone, but we allow, you just, you do some of.
I mean, if you're asking me, I would prefer the split zoning. If it doesn't work exactly, I can come back and change some of it to make it work. I've done a cluster before. I think Kevin, you did a cluster in, it's exactly what it's called, a cluster. So I would prefer not to go down that road. I don't know if you'll agree with me or not, but I would prefer not to do that.
Come on, Kevin, go out there and agree with him. I mean, I think if it's, if it's just pushed to the PD and if we push the PD, then we don't get the development, then we don't get anything out there. And I agree with, I agree with Chad, and to be frank, I trust Chad, and what he's, what he's proposing is going to be something that's quality development. We may not get that, we may not get anything out there in the future, or we certainly may not get the opportunity to get some of the utilities. I think that's why we were able to work with Massey Oaks, because we knew there wasn't going to be another shot, or one likely we'd get another shot, so. I mean, I think we'll just have to wait and see what, what planning and zoning proposes. Right now, they have the R4. If they recommend approval, then maybe council can come up with some options when it comes up for initial vote. But right now, I don't think there's enough of a consensus to really provide good direction.
Okay, does council have any other comments?
I have one more, Mayor.
Okay.
And I know we talked about, when we discussed Massey, Massey Oaks, we talked about water capabilities and fire. What would this development do to what we've already planned for? Do we have capacity in the treatment plant? And do we have, I guess our new, one of our new fire stations that we're going to build will cover this area, so how does that impede any of our plans thus far?
Councilman Moore, with regards to your statement on capacity in the water system and wastewater system, the capacity's there. That is why the line would be looped, and it's also in part of the agreement with Massey Oaks. The city has paid for oversizing associated with that to plan for future development.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the council?
Mayor, I do. Chad, if you don't mind, stand back up for a second, I need to ask you something. You know, I did mention, you know, the clusters that, you know, are actually on the R4. My concern to me, you know, if we approve this as an R4, we don't know what we're going to be getting. The other side of it is, you can tell me you do 30%, but when we were, you were talking about it and you were giving out the additional numbers that you're going to have to put into it to make this thing work, it was not coming to me as a very strong knowledge that you knew exactly what the numbers were going to cost you. And so if you don't know what the numbers are going to cost you in order to develop this, I'm not too sure that we can identify with saying, okay, only 30% will go into R4. It may have to be ticked up in order for you to make, you know, I'm hoping that anytime you go after anything like this, that you make a profit off of bottom line, or you wouldn't be doing it, you know, to lose money.
Yeah, absolutely. And we've gone over this and over this and over this, and we're following, our numbers are actively almost mimicking what's in the, the development agreement with Massey Oaks. It's, it's right here, and I can show you this if you want me to bring it to you, but it tells you, I mean, these numbers are close compared to what we're looking at, and it shows the city contribution versus the developer. Or the easement, so this is straight out of the development agreement, you can, and so for the approved cost estimate for required easements, so this is just getting the easement on veterans, the acquisition, the total cost of it is 986,000. The McKeever part of it is 354,000. On the water lines, same thing. We've looked at it, and they're, they did promise, the city did promise to do some, some portion of, to oversize it. So for the water line to come down veterans, according to this development agreement that's on record, just the veterans portion is 768,000. To the developer, the city's going to pay 160,000. The McKeever part of it, the developer's going to pay 856,000. The city's going to pay 57,000. So you can, and so, and we've looked at these numbers and tried to figure, is this right? Is this, you know, I mean, this is, this is a risk, and so that's.
Yeah, you mentioned something about the Massey Oaks as a shared, you know, position at Jau-Hell with them, and then you talk about on theirs, it's eight-year investment.
Well, so for this portion that we're putting in, according to their development agreement, they build this portion when they get to 500 houses. So we would, we, I mean, honestly, I've had a neighborhood zoned after this PD went in place, and I have houses on the ground. So these guys are still moving forward. This is definitely a bigger development and it's more challenging, and, but like I said, they don't, they don't even have, you know, all they have are preliminary stuff, and they're just now getting their financing in order. So we're bringing the water line in from the other side. They, they will basically put, bring the water in, I think, down 1128, start their development, get up to 500 homes, and then they'll start bringing this water line in from the other side. So how long that's going to take them from now? They have to engineer, get it through the city, they have to build the subdivision, sell 500 homes before this water line comes in.
Are y'all planning to work with Massey or whatever to put this into a mud?
Yes, we will definitely go into a mud. It's, I mean, we can't do it without it. But again, we, the cost of it is, the mud's reimbursed for utilities, but the cost of this, you know, like I said earlier, we won't, the mud won't cover it. They actually reached out to us when they saw this on the agenda, and I basically told them, you know, after tonight, we'll have a better plan of what we're going to do or if we're going to do anything. So we'll definitely be working with them, and I think they're interested. I think they're, I talked to Alan Mueller, so, who initially, and I think he seemed excited to spread some of their costs out on us, so.
There's a comment by council at this point. Hearing that, let's move in to staff wrap-up comment.
Thank you, sir. Just a couple of things. I think the first thing.
You got an answer, okay.
Is to remember that Massey Oaks was not a planned development that came about in a short time, but that was because the city wanted to make sure it was done right, and that it was a quality development that was going to last for a long time, it was going to be a good investment. And so the mix of houses that are guaranteed in their development agreement are tied to specific things such as higher design standards, as well as increased open space. So those are things that under straight zoning you wouldn't get. So they, they agreed to give more for their PD, and they got a mix of homes. But the, I think we all agree that the RE is a holding district, that it's really out there to just kind of hold things till we know what's going on. We have to realize that this is really the last undeveloped residential large parcels left in the city, and so we want to make sure we get it right. Just because it hasn't developed yet doesn't mean it won't develop. I think we all remember, not too long ago, there were lots of, lots of what's developed in Pearland today had been empty for a long time, but they turned into quality developments. And so I think we just need to remember that development can take time, being the right development to take time, and the first R4 proposal that comes along is not necessarily the one we need. Thank you, sir.
And now the staff reports, comments, wrap-up. Good, that was it? Good. Moving in our agenda to item four, which is, allows me to adjourn this joint public hearing, which I shall do, and I will also open another joint public hearing with number three, and ask the chairman of the planning commission to read into the record the purpose of that hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request of Justin Barnett, R-West Development Company Incorporated applicant on behalf of Triangle 31 LLC owner for approval of zoning change from single-family residential 4, R4, and light industrial M1 to plan development PD on approximately 62.46 acres. This is the 3,900 block of Pearland Parkway.
I complete your, all right. Moving in our agenda, item one, which is application information and case summary. First item A is staff report.
Yes, sir. Thank you. So this is a project that has been in the works since December of last year. We had a workshop about bringing in a higher-density project with some associated independent assisted living, memory care, and those residential would eventually feed into and provide residence for the multifamily assisted living facility. This project is located along Pearland Parkway. The current zoning out there is R4 and M1 for a proposed plan development. Staff has worked with applicants to get them to where they are today with this site plan proposed in front of you. One of the key differences between what we originally saw and what is in front of you is the addition of the detention along the southern property line of the total tract. Just want to bring this to your attention. It was included within the staff packet. This is from the Texas Railroad Commission Geographic Information System indicating and showing the pipelines which are in the area. One thing to note is that the base map of this is from a slightly earlier time period that did indicate the previous borrow pits, which you can see south of the main trunk lines in blue. This is potentially where some of those residences would be located. The code conformance table, subject properties within the medium-density and light industrial future land use designations, which aren't, are not in conformance with the proposed The thoroughfare plan is looking to abandon the extension of industrial drive by way of constructing the cul-de-sac, which is inconsistent with the thoroughfare plan. The applicant is proposing to amend the thoroughfare plan, but as it stands today, it's inconsistent with the plan. And the subject property is currently not plotted. Should it receive a plan development zoning classification, it would have to go through a master plat, preliminary plat, and final plat. Further, city utilities are located along industrial drive. However, the subject development will require extension of those utilities to service the area. This shows the criteria for approval for a new plan development district, and that completes staff's report. We'll now pass it on to the applicant who has a presentation, if you think.
Complete your report?
Yes, sir.
All right. Moving to item B, applicant presentation. Thank you for being here, sir.
Give me one second, I get this on.
Justin Barnett, R-West Development, 7918 Rodway Street. Here tonight to give you a little vision, a little bit of our vision, the French Quarter, a planned unit development called an Age and Place Continuing Care Retirement Unity. Better way, Age and Place allows an economical way for the transition of care of aging adults. There was a Merrill Lynch age wave study released in 2015, stated that 85% of retirees say that their top preference to receive long-term care in their home if needed, rather than relocating or receiving in skilled nursing or other such facility. A different vision, this is kind of a unique vision. A different vision, this is kind of a unique vision for R. West Development. Renee McGuire and I have sat down and talked about the direction of what this means to us, and this is more than just push some dirt around, sell some lots, go home. We're trying to create a community. We want to build a community within the community to serve the community, something that we want to give back to. We want to see this. This is something kind of unique and special. And we've been, as Martin said, we've come back. We were here in December with a workshop, and, you know, we spent a lot of communication, a lot of time back and forth with the city, working out a way. Mayor, I know when I was here in December, you said, "I hope there's a way that we can, we can make this work." Something that is unique for us, and certainly for R. West Development. It, it, it's kind of a unique concept that we want to see become light. There's going to be opportunities. And here's something that's, that's, that's nice for us is opportunities for the residents includes next-door volunteering for the Forgotten Angels Foundation. There's lots of things that, interaction that can happen with our, with our retired adults that are moving in here. Assist with community functions and events, creating a strong homeowners association that will, would be very active in, in participating in the surrounding community and serving that community, such as Pearland. Volunteer with the community outreach programs. It's something, you know, I'm far from retirement, but I, I know that I have parents, and I have loved ones and friends that are retiring, and they're looking at things to do. And we want to, we kind of want to facilitate that and see that this community facilitates that. Male and female mentorship, something that's new for me, and that something's happened in the last couple of years is I became a mentor at the age of 40 to a young, to an older adult, an older man that just took me under his wing, and it, it's meant a lot. And I, so I, you know, this is kind of a vision that I've talked to Renee about, is seeing that men and women mentoring younger adults and showing them the ropes. And it, it's meant a lot to me, and I'd love to see it come to fruition here. Visiting, interact with friends and loved ones in the assisted living, memory care. This is something that, you know, when, when you are, when you have a loved one that has, that just can't make it anymore on their own, and there may have been your life, husband and wife, long-term, been married for 60 years, and they have to go into a memory care facility because it's just too much to handle. We would love, and this concept we've built, is that they would be able to just travel a few hundred feet every day to see their loved one and be with them, if that came to life, so. They can also attend and serve at the planned church counseling center that we're planning next door. This mixed-use planned development includes 90-unit independent living, 63-unit assisted living, 28 units of memory care, and then 147 single-family residential lots. And we're still working with builders, on which builder to select for this. The amenities, the, the amenities available to all the residents, not just the, not just the assisted living residents, not just the independent or the memory care residents, but even to the, to the single-family homeowners. We want to build a clubhouse with a community pool, community recreational facility, a theater, private party event hosting space, outdoor grilling cabana, walking trails throughout the entire, throughout the entire development, just, just, just a way to, to move about. Even to, to the lake up north, to the, to the tiny lake down south, lake amenities, fountains, trails, benches, new dining rooms. The assisted living facility would include new dining rooms. One, one would serve the memory, one would serve the assisted living, and one side would, would serve the residential development, the residential homeowners and the independent living. Or they can take out, come take a meal out, cook for them. Some of the direct care staff available to all residents. I know I'm going through that with my mother right now. She just had knee surgery. She's 72. She just needed someone to come in and just help bathe for, for a few weeks. And it was nice to kind of have someone to do that. And it would be nice to be able to pick up the phone and say, "Hey, I'm going to need this." And that's what we're offering here in this community. On-site locations for physical therapy and doctor's visits, van transportation for all, for any off-site needs, doggy parks and open spaces, gated community. This would be a gate, completely gated community with controlled access, and hair and nail salon for all the residents. Now, I want to just give you, the architect that we retained for the preliminary concept design was involved in the design of Woodhaven. And I want to, I brought just a, a video. Hopefully, you can hear it. There'll be sound. Martin promised me with everything he had that he would get sound for me.
Sometimes we all ponder what the next step should be in our lives. Is a senior living community right for me, for my loved one? Woodhaven Village aims to provide the best senior living option in Conroe for when your next step leads you to our home. With spacious and senior-friendly independent cottage homes, a covered, pull-around entrance for our ever-changing weather, we have you covered. Our experienced staff greet you by name when you arrive in our lobby, complete with sitting room, fireplace, and library. If food is your passion, Woodhaven Village's professional chef will delight your taste buds. With a wide variety of rotating specials, classic favorites, and one-of-a-kind specialties, you should always find something to your liking. For those in assisted living and memory care, know that we also offer nutritionally-balanced meals, reviewed by dieticians routinely. We have a fully-functioning business center, true fitness room for independent workouts, and scheduled classes led by trained experts. After your workout, stop by and fuel up at our bistro, where we cater to those looking for a light snack, pastries, sandwiches, and an assortment of drinks. But if your new home options pique your interest most, we offer a plethora of apartment styles and layouts. Many come with complete kitchens to entertain family and guests. Wi-Fi, cable TV, and utilities are all included, offering you less bills to worry about paying. Our campus is part of a master planned community, catering to families and retirees alike. Our location will provide easy access to the upcoming Grand Central Park, home to retail, shopping, groceries, and housing. Woodhaven Village is a place where every element of true living comes together in one harmonious place. Our door-
All right. And this was, this is in Conroe, and we've reached out. We've been in the, in the feasibility study. We reached out to the management company that currently manages Woodhaven. We've toured it several times. Renee took me there, and this was like, we have, we have to do this. This is something that we need to bring in to Pearland, and unique design. And you saw that there's cottages. They have, Woodhaven has cottages behind it. There's, there's cottages that serve as single residential homes or kind of duplexes. And what we're doing in lieu of the cottages that Woodhaven has is offering the single-family residents as part of that community. So this is our site plan, and this has been a long time coming and a lot of work. So I, I'm going to open it up for questions.
I've got a question for you.
Right.
No, no, I, I'm familiar with these. We, they have one out there off of Westheimer. It's called Eagle's Trace. And it's a full-fledged facility there. And I think it's got three or four floor plans in it, and goes up to 2,100 square feet into it. But it, it's a fully-loaded, but we went out there, and I'm saying we, it's, it's a capital bank, and we took over the bank in that area that's inside the building there. But it's the phase then, it's, it's all the way through, you know, from going through there until you get to phase three, and you can move into each one of them. I mean, it's, it's a magnificent place, no doubt about it. I mean, you know, you've got everything in there from a barber shop to beauty shop to full-time doctor 24 hours a day, three chefs out there that you can order your food. But I mean, every amenities out there. And, but in order to get in there, it's a $250,000 fee that you pay to get in first in order to do that. But I mean, the amenity is, is, like y'all are talking about in yours, it's probably a little bit more in-depth. But, but this one woodworking shop, you know, for people and things of that nature. I mean, it's, these are actually, it's, it's unbelievable of these facilities like this. And they take you to, you know, to the mall at Memorial or the Galleria and drive you over there and pick you up and take you back or whatever. But it was amazing, I thought, that, you know, they got either two or three chefs in there, and you, you order your meal, it's like a restaurant, to go in there and do that. But it's very expensive, but it's-
Councilman, do you think they give back more to the community than, than it?
If I could just, if I could interrupt for just a minute. I think we've got a section on the agenda where y'all can dialogue.
Okay.
I, I didn't want to interrupt you, Councilman Owens, but we need to go in the order of the agenda with staff wrap-up and then persons wishing to speak for and against before we move on to council discussion.
You're in ready for, so that's okay.
I think you've made your presentation. Let me move from the agenda down to staff wrap-up comments.
Yes, sir. There are two things I'd like to bring up. First is the mobility section from the staff report. One of the deviations that is within this proposed development is the elimination of some of the sidewalks on both sides of the street and to propose to have a larger sidewalk on one side of the street for the horseshoe, say it's a horseshoe, for the U-shaped portion at the lower end of the residential section. This would also allow for deviations in side setback, minimum lot area, minimum lot width, decreasing the rear setback and increasing the maximum building height from 35 foot to 45 foot for the assisted living facility. So there are some unique features to this planned development that I neglected to bring up the first time around. Thank you for the opportunity.
That wraps up your comments.
Yes, sir.
Let's move to the next item, which is persons wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. Have Councilmember Reyes to add us in that action.
Thank you, Mayor. Are they?
The formular coming in. Can you just bring that one up here? Okay. Wish you the work. Thank you.
All right. Mayor, we first, we have Mr. Renee McGuire that you would like to speak-
Yeah.
-on this item.
Okay. Thank you.
Renee McGuire, West Development, 7918 West Broadway. And I live in Pearland also. As many of you know, I've built about 3,000 lots in the city of Pearland. And, you know, at some point in time, I didn't want to just build houses because we have so many people in Pearland that are hurting. Work with my bachelor's in biblical counseling. I work with drug addicts, alcoholics, people that are bipolar and have a lot of struggles. We've got 300 kids in the Pearland ISD school district that are homeless. I've been with families who, whose wife, husband's an alcoholic, wife committed suicide overdosed on drugs. I've seen that part of Pearland, and that's not what I'm here for. And we see an opportunity with some of the people we've been working with and that are going to be involved in this after I'm gone. This is kind of going to be my legacy that will hopefully impact all of Pearland. And this is kind of an incubator. You know, I've studied the art of aging, and we want to encourage these people who are retired who have plenty of time on their hands and money to put something back in the community. We desperately need mentors. We desperately need to train people to get out and be a part of people's lives. There are so many people in this community that's hurting. We've tried to produce not only a project, but we're struggling to try to figure out how to do the entity that will continue to bring forth our vision to really impact hurting people in the city of Pearland. We've got neighbors, we've got in our family. We've seen, and we read the paper and we watch the news. And let me tell you, there's a lot of people in Pearland that are desperate and despair and hopeless. And that's who we want to impact. And we believe this is a resource for us to begin to, from doctors to direct care staff to nurses. As you know, we, I started Forgotten Angels in 2001, and, you know, there's a lot of people struggling there. And we've, we've touched a lot of people and changed a lot of lives. And we've, we thank you too, council, for the grants that you've given us for our day hab and for our agriculture building and for the things we're doing out there. We appreciate you so much. We have over 20 houses. We have a day hab program, offices, and we want to thank you for your part that you've played in partnering with us on that. So that's kind of what we're looking at doing, and we're trying to do the best we can to perpetuate this vision. And we look forward to being able to, to serve our whole community in one way or another and touch people's lives. Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak either for or against this proposed zone change?
Here to speak in favor of it. This is Kevin Cole, 3808 Houston Lake Drive. And I'm here tonight in a different role for this public hearing as president of the HOA for Town Lake Estates Next Door. And this, this has been on the radar of, of our community since December, since it was first unveiled. We've heard nothing but, but good things from our citizens and our residents that they would much rather see this than M1 next door to our, to our neighborhood. And I will say this, you know, we are, part of our society is aging. Right now, there's quite a few houses in our neighborhood that are for sale, and the vast majority of those are people who are downsizing. They are now empty nesters, and it's ready for them to, to pass it off to a younger family, and they're looking for something smaller. I don't know where they're moving to. I don't know all those particulars, but that's happening right next door. So it'd be nice to keep some of those folks, you know, right here in Pearland with their anchors. So we look forward to having Renee and, and these residents next door to us as neighbors. Thank you.
Does anybody else like to speak either for or against this proposed zone change?
Members of council, Ross Phillips, 4915 Pecan Grove Drive, speaking out against.
Thank you, Ross.
I represent a landowner, driver pipeline company who's on Industrial Drive, right there, catty corner on the right-hand side. One of the major issues that my client has with the particular location of this development, not its purpose, not its concept, not its ideal, but just simply where we're going to put the one that we're talking about doing. Our problem is, as you heard staff say, there was an idea for a thoroughfare plan that's been published for many years. It was supposed to take Industrial Drive, run it all the way down to Pearland Parkway, and actually get us some use out of this M1 land that's been sitting- sitting mostly vacant for many years as an investment for the city. The same way that the industrial land on the northern part of 35 sat for some time until it was filled. And it's recently been filled and it, well, it's done quite a bit for the job prospects for young people in our community. I know there was some great discussion, and I agree, that we need to support our elders in this community, but we need to not neglect the fact that we have kind of a small job base for people that were raised here, live here. They don't go to college, some of them, they stay here, they get a high school degree. Some of them have, you know, finally, we've got a technical school and we're getting more and more of that. But without the jobs to keep them here, they will take those skills they learn and they'll go to another community. And they'll have wonderful lives, be great tax-paying citizens, but they won't be here. They won't be growing our community. They won't be growing our home. And they won't be here to support their elders who are going to be living in that community. They'll be gone. So we would hope that this idea could take shape and grow in another piece of land that isn't zoned, some of the last M1 land in Pearland, wasn't going to change the thoroughfare plan and isn't going to possibly stop this investment that we've sunk all of this time and money and, you know, lost opportunity into holding the zoning the way we've had it for as long as we've had it, only to say, eh, we changed our minds, let's move it on to something else. Okay? I think both as a citizen here who left and came back to help run my family business, as well as, you know, an attorney who's hired to do a job and represent a client who has legitimate interests in his land, that this particular development right here, right now, isn't going to be the best idea for the long-term growth of the city. And it's going to sort of waste this final piece that we had. You know, we don't have so much industrial land. There's plenty of land that can be changed into a mixed-use commercial and residential development. There's only so much we have that's set up for industrial and it's right here. This is some of the last bit of it. I would just ask that we take some very thoughtful consideration over whether we want to expend some of our last industrial land, turning it into a residential development, changing that thoroughfare, or whether we want to realize our investment by putting the thoroughfare through and getting that property developed for light industrial work to employ our young people. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Is there any other members of the audience that would like to speak either for or against this proposed PD? Any members of the audience that would like to speak either for or against this proposed PD? And final time, any members of the audience that would like to speak either for or against this proposed land development? We're done, Mayor.
We're beginning to get to a break where we've been sitting here since four o'clock. So what I'd like to do is, we've still got more on this particular joint public hearing. I'd like to take an opportunity to make, if everybody would go and come back fast. About four-minute break.
And move to item three, which is council. Planning commission and staff have an opportunity to make their final comments. Moving that at that place. City council members, council member Orlando, would you have any comments that?
Nothing yet, Mayor.
Okay, council member Reed.
We are in council and we're.
Talking about discussion.
Council discussion for this pro speech.
No comments, Mayor. I mean, you know, the biggest concern would be the changes that I guess were supposed to be made to industrial and, but you know, I'm interested in kind of seeing what, yeah, no comments right now, Mayor.
Council member Moore.
I guess.
Council member Perez.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so I've got a couple of, you know, comments, maybe some statements, you know, and Renee, I appreciate you taking the time when we talked about this before. I see that you've incorporated some of the changes I requested or I told you that I had issue with, particularly at that cul-de-sac entrance or the roundabout entrance. I think, you know, want to reiterate what we, what I had said in the previous meeting, what I said then, when I, when I talked with you. We want to use this as a planning document and amend planning. We don't want to use this as a tool to try and amend anything in the engineering criteria. In the end, we're going to, if we allow the zoning, if we allow some of the essentially variances through the PD for the, or some of the requirements in UDC, it does not alleviate you from the full breadth and requirements of the engineering design criteria manual. That the PD is not, is not a tool for that. With that, I think, you know, the biggest concern then now is what industrial drive does, and I think, you know, regardless of what we feel about the PD, it's moot with industrial drive doing what it's doing. And I think, and I said this in the previous meeting, I'm not 100% sure that I can agree with the merits of industrial drive going through where it's at, mostly because I just don't see traffic on the back end of industrial drive needing to bypass the intersection at Dixie Farm and Maine so necessarily that we would need the road to come in and have to build what the city would have to, have to end up doing this, build a better part of a $2 million bridge across that Coward Creeks bypass. With that, I mean, I, I'm comfortable with modifying the industrial drive thoroughfare with respect to, with respect to benefiting this development. What that means, I think, you know, needs, still needs to be negotiated with staff.
Industrial drive, yeah.
I feel if we were to essentially do what y'all are proposing as a council, one, it's a separate, it's a separate meeting, it's a separate action, obviously that would have to be done preemptive to finalizing this PD, because we don't want to initiate the zone change but not deal with the thoroughfare. Primarily, the industrial drive cul-de-sac that y'all have is vastly insufficient. It may meet the minimum requirements, but that, that's not big enough to deal with industrial traffic. You know, if we've got trucks, large trucks that need to go down, down there and get caught and need to turn around, a 50-foot, 50-foot radio on a cul-de-sac is not gonna, is not gonna cut it. So we need to, you know, I think before we do any kind of proposal about modifying the thoroughfare plan, we're gonna need some kind of traffic model. I mean, honestly, go into, perform a traffic, traffic analysis, show the truck, show a WB50 truck being able to make that turn within that radii, be able to get in and get out. There's no way we could approve industrial terminating where you're planning to terminate it without, without knowing that the trucks can get out. I think I kind of have some consternation about what's being proposed, not necessarily with any of the individual components, but the, just the volume of components. I mean, it's, I believe it's gonna be quality development. I do believe that everything, taking everything you say at face value, I do wish for this project to move forward, but I mean, we have several variances that we're being, that are trying to be built in here. Reduction in lot width, reduction in lot area, reduction in side yard setbacks, reduction in rear yard setbacks, front yard setbacks, reduction in required sidewalk. It's just, it's a, it's a lot. It's a lot to swallow. I think on its merits, the development will work, but I think we're gonna have to reduce the amount of built-in variances that we're trying to do here. You know, and I don't want to be so presumptive to say these are the ones that you need to have, but it can't be as, I mean, you're basically just obliterating the, obliterating the UDC and coming up with something completely and wholly different. We've got to hold on to some value of what the UDC intends for residential lots. We can, we can make a variance, I mean, I'm perfectly fine, for example, with a 45-foot lot, and I know lot area comes along with that, that we do a 45-foot lot, we are reducing all the setbacks so we can put a bigger building on it. It's hard for me to kind of come up with what, what kind of quality development are we doing here in conformance with the unified development code? So, you know, I don't, I don't want to beat it to death. I mean, I don't want to, and I don't want to prescriptively tell you, you have to do all of these things. I do am supportive of the development. I'm supportive of the, either the reduction, or let's say the, the termination of industrial drive at the edge of your property in our thoroughfare plan, or the rerouting, if staff believes that's a better option for the thoroughfare plan to help facilitate this development. But I, I think we need to come down a little bit on the asks. I'll let planning and zoning kind of make their recommendations and trust their, trust their judgment, but that's, those are my thoughts.
Senator Williams.
Yeah, I tend to agree with councilman Perez on, on the industrial drive thing. That's not so much a hang-up for me as much as all the deviations to the UDC that you're asking for. If we could lessen some of those, I would, I would be more in favor of that, but industrial drive is not a hang-up for me. I just, I think there's other ways that we can, we can deal with industrial drive.
Okay. Counsel, have any other wrap-up comments?
Yeah, Mayor.
Williams, Woody Williams.
Yeah, industrial. I don't think it makes much sense for us to put that through there anyway, that that'd be at the city's cost, be able to do it. When you look across the street on 35, you've got 1,000 acres over there, it's industrial over there on that side, if you want to develop on it. The other thing too, if you're talking about industrial and big trucks, you can't put them through there and go on Pearland Parkway. We don't allow trucks on Pearland Parkway, on 18-wheelers, anything like that. So if you've got a big truck and you're working there and you're hauling something off, you can't go that way, you gotta go on 35. I'm sorry, but that's the way that, that is on Pearland Parkway. So to me, I don't think it makes a lot of sense, you know, for us to, to put industrial through there. I don't see what that little short distance would do, other than cost us $2 to $4 million probably to put the roadway in, that being the city's money. So I don't have a problem with that, leaving industrial out, going across the street on 35, there's industrial or property over there that you could use on that. I think the development is a good development that they're trying to do out there. I think it's, is actually a needed development for this area. So that's my only thought on that.
Any other comment from council? Now let's move to planning commission, Mr. Chairman.
Mayor.
I think this is a good development. It needs to move forward quickly.
Thomas.
Anything additional?
I'm a yes on this. I agree with Mary. It's a good, it's a good development, and I know there will be plenty of employees there. Plenty of people employed there, so I'm for this development.
As a son to an aging father who is 84, I think this is a good development, and as long as they get in line with what planning has, I think it's a good project.
I would concur. I think that there are some planning modifications that can be made, but for the most part, it is, it is an asset.
Couple of comments. Again, I want to thank Renee for all that she does for the community. She has built some, some nice developments here in Pearland, two of which, one of which I've lived in and one that my mother lives in currently that used to be owned by Renee. So I've seen the product that Renee does across Pearland. She does good, good developments. Unfortunately, on this one, I can't support it, mainly due to the component that is surrounded by two of the largest pipeline easements that cross Pearland. We had discussion over Parkside at Pearland over on Brookside Road, and during the final phases of construction, there was an incident with a pipeline strike there during a storm that some of the council members that live in that area remember. We were lucky that that one didn't do more damage than it did. I had the opportunity to speak with Diane Thomas that lived in what was then Brookside during the 1978 pipeline explosion that killed multiple people and friends and family of hers. She spoke against, she was here and spoke against Parkside whenever that was being developed. I liked the product. I wish this piece of property was, it, it didn't have all the challenges that it has. It's kind of ironic, we're talking about putting a residential area on Industrial Boulevard, Industrial Drive. We're 1,500, 1,000-foot, 1,500-foot from a landfill. Again, we're not learning from our past and issues that can come up with landfills. This is northwest of the landfill, wind blows primarily out of south-southeast. That could pose a problem. For those reasons, mainly the senior facility and the densely populated three-story building in between the two large pipeline easements. There's also a pipeline easement to the south along Dixie Farm. It's just, it's the wrong piece of property, but it's the right project for Pearland, and unfortunately, I'm gonna be a no on this one. That completes our comments, Mayor.
Complete your comment, okay. Moving to staff discussion. Can we wrap up?
Yes, sir. Staff recognizes and is in favor of the need for senior housing and continued care facilities. This may not be the right site with the listed deviations and the inherited land development issues that we've discussed. Not every site is good for every use.
That wraps it up for you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. On our agenda, I'm item four, which allows me to, at this point, to adjourn this joint public hearing. There were three joint public hearings together in a, in a companion basis. At this time, we will move to another, we have several different, about three different types of public hearings, and we just had a joint public hearing. Right now, we'll do a joint special meeting, which is just, has a little bit of a structure. And let me ask the city, we need to call, formally, we need to call an order with the role count of the city council, who are here except for two individuals on our council who are not in the house at the present time. And I'll ask that the planning and zoning commission, now several will call.
Thank you, Mayor. Likewise, all members are present and accounted for, except for Ron Wickers.
Okay, and then I'll ask our staff for introduction of agenda and format hearing.
Yes, sir. We have three items as listed on the screen, and as previously, we'll have staff report, applicant presentation, and then an opportunity for people to come and speak. Please keep your comments to three minutes and fill out the speaker's card and turn it into our recording secretary. After each of the items is completed, we've heard all of the testimony, city council will have their meeting and act on the resolution. Those actions can either be to approve, approve with conditions, deny, or table to another meeting. That completes the staff's introduction and format of hearing.
Okay. It's the joint special meeting, number one. DC Chair, would you give us the special?
Thank you, Mayor. This request was tabled by a city council on May 20th, 2019, joint special meeting to joint, to June 17th, 2019 meeting. During the hearing, some neighbors expressed their concern about the site plan and height of the building by Emily Besser, applicant on behalf of Thomas L. Besser, owner, approval of a conditional use permit CUP to allow for, to allow two-family dwelling duplex use located within the old town site mixed-use OTMU district on approximately 0.287 acres. General location is 2513 South Grand Street.
All right. This is the first of three joint special meetings as we go through the process, or if you have some time frames, some past experience so far. Item A is application information case summary, staff report.
Yes, sir. We previously gave a report on this at the May 20th meeting. We met with the applicant to go over their site plan and provide comments and suggestions. That was received, and then they turned back in a new site plan, which is shown on the screen. The big change is that the building was pushed back. The rear property line is on the left-hand side of the screen, and the front property line is on the right-hand side. And if you may recall from the previous site plan, the proposed building was more towards the front, positioned closer to the middle.
Complete your report.
Our report.
Item two under this would be applicant presentation and three, yes, thank you for being here tonight.
Thanks for having me back. I know it's been a long night, so I'll be brief. I want to start just by saying thank you, because it was a great opportunity actually to take this past month to rework the site, and I hope that the fact that we've made changes, you know, speaks to the flexibility that we mentioned in the last meeting. I also wanted to particularly thank the planning and engineering department, who've put a lot of hours in, walking me through what we can and cannot do, and I hope that you can tell from the plans that we've really tried to work within what Pearland has set up for this particular district. So in the past month, we've, obviously, we, I'm sorry, reworked the plans. We've met with everyone, we've extended invitation to everybody within 200 feet of the house, and we've met with neighbors to show them the adjusted plans that are in front of you, as well as an alternate for the lot if we aren't able to get the CUP. We have, as mentioned, pushed back by 20 feet. We did that by losing some backyard space and readjusting stairs, but we walked away from last meeting, understanding that the two biggest issues was how close the building was to the street and the fact that it was two stories. With our goal still being to put a duplex there, it's hard to come off of two stories, but we do hope that the fact that we've pushed 20 feet back is an improvement. I also want to just remind, particularly anybody that wasn't at the last meeting, that a lot of thought did go into the fact, being that it's a two-story, to keep privacy as a factor. So just as a reminder, there are no windows or porches on the second story of the house on the back, which is the side that faces park. The residence to the right is a building that we own, and to the left, there is considerable mature trees, as well as an empty lot before you get to the actual home that's there. So we did look into that from a, from a privacy perspective. We can form to the architecture of the area, that is pier and beam, to be built with hardy plank and to include the color palette that's indicated for that section of Pearland. So just want to thank you for your time, for the advice that was given by both council and by planning, and thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving to the next item, persons wishing to speak for or against the proposed request. Mayor Potem will address that issue.
Thank you, Mayor. Are there any members of the audience, well, I'm sorry, let me, I have three that have already said that they want to speak, so I'll go to the, the second part afterward. So with the, with the individuals that have turned in a speaker's card, let me call first, Tefalo Santiago. Say again? He's left, okay. Next, Mr. Rick Sims. Mr. Fuller, come on down. Since you're technically now speaking for a group, please speak your, tell us your name and address, for purpose of record, as a group, you can speak for five minutes, I'll let you know when you have 30 seconds left.
I'll try not to use the five, I know it's, it's late. My name's Kevin Fuller, 2809 Merlin Lane, Pearland, Texas, 77581. We did get a chance to meet with the landowners, the property owners proposing the project. The neighbors in general, I cannot speak completely for the rest of the neighbors. I understand we don't all have the same issues and concerns. We being the immediate neighbor to the north, which would be the one that butts the nearest side where the duplex would be built. There were other concerns expressed by members that backed up to park. I think those peoples, which I think she's addressed, had the biggest concerns being the fact that it's two-story. I understand that for us, the two-story wasn't as big of an issue. The, the proposed project now, we had a laundry list of things we'd love to do, they, we did get an opportunity to meet, they invited us to all meet with them, and they said, here's the new plan. So I'd like to thank them first and foremost for, for making the change that they did. We'd all like for more in this, but we understand that we can't always have what we want. So first and foremost, they, they did move the project back 20 feet from the, from the street, which, and I still have not received a determination of exactly where the property line begins with regard to the street. I know it's 20 feet, but I don't know 20 feet from where. Maybe that's something to be clarified, but it, but that's certainly better than what it was, because I don't think that fit with all within the neighboring properties. The two-story wasn't as big of an issue for us. We never did like the fact that it was a multifamily, but, but we understand that, that we have to make some compromises. I think this was, showing the alternate plan, and if my understanding is correct, it was to, to build a, a commercial building, which would seemingly be similar to what they were doing, but only smaller, much more concrete, and essentially take up the majority of what I would consider a residential lot for purely commercial purposes and evidently commercial purposes. So I, for my family, and I think at least from the Sims standpoint, that we're also here, it would be our preference certainly that, that the existing duplex be built in its existing format, as opposed to a secondary option of a commercial project with who knows what kind of businesses might come in. I think that for most neighbors, they would prefer residential neighbors as opposed to commercial neighbors, which will be yet to be determined. So I think that concludes my comments, unless Mr. Sims would like to add anything. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Two minutes, 22 seconds, good job. With that, is there any other member of the audience like to speak either for or against this proposed conditional use permit? Any member of the audience like to speak either for or against this proposed conditional use permit? Any member of the audience like to speak either for or against this proposed conditional use permit? We're done, Mayor.
If that information is on the record, let's move to item B, which is. which is an opportunity for planning commission and city council and staff to share some of their perspectives. Starting with the planning commission, Mr. Chairman.
Start with Mary.
I have no objection to this. I think it should go forward.
I'll agree with that.
I just briefly want to thank the applicant again for the flexibility that they have. I know that it really takes a lot to consult with so many others around you to appease all in question, so thank you.
I have no issue with this plan. Mayor, that concludes our comments.
Moving to city council, starting with Councilmember Owens.
Well, Mayor, it looks like that from the discussion we had last time, everybody took a breather and relooked at it again. And seems like everything is okay, from what I can understand. So I don't have any problem with the development as it needs to be.
Okay. Councilmember Moore?
No issues with the development, Mayor.
Councilmember Perez?
One, I'd like to thank the developer for agreeing to reach, I think, or speak with the adjacent property owners, come to some kind of concession. I think the 20-foot setback is a good concession. I think I could not feel comfortable forcing this to be a one-story building. While I'm sympathetic to what others have said, I live in a two-story house. I can see into my neighbor's backyard. He's never done anything that really made me too uncomfortable. There's still time, but I think that it's, I think that that's, I think it's a normal, it's a normality of residential homes to have them at two stories. So I wouldn't feel comfortable putting that prohibition on there. So I'm going to be a yes.
Councilmember Reed?
No comment, Mayor.
And Councilmember Orlando?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate, I appreciate the good faith effort made by the applicant to work with the city and with their neighbors, and I am going to be in favor.
Okay. Are complete, staff wrap-up comments?
Yes, sir. One item to address. There was a question about the 20-foot front setback. That front setback is going to be from the property line, which is the edge of the right-of-way. I don't personally know where the edge of the right-of-way is, but that is where the front setback would be located from.
Okay. Under the joint special meeting process, the item we were discussing morphs into a city council business action. So Councilmember Perez, would you place this on the table for us?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration possible action resolution R. 2019-CUP 18-00031. So move.
Second.
Madam, we have a motion. You have a second on it? Okay, we have a second. Okay.
Councilmember Perez, how do you vote?
Second on the floor.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember? Give me one second.
More.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Motion passed five to zero.
As we have completed that portion of it, we will adjourn this particular item one of our joint special meeting. Moving to item number, special meeting number two. Planning commission, Mr. Chairman, would you place this on the table for us?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request by Dustin Jackson, applicant on behalf of UR Safe Pearland LLC, owner for approval of a conditional use permit CUP to allow for a micro-distillery on 1.8365 acre tract of land located within the general commercial district. General location is 1607 North Main Street, Suite A.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Moving to application information and case summary, starting with staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. As I stated before, this is a request for approval of a conditional use permit to allow a micro-distillery on 1.8 acre tract of land located within the general commercial district. The applicant proposes to locate a micro-distillery within an 800-square-foot lease space within the existing multi-tenant center located at 1607 North Main Street, Suite Number A. This use requires approval of a conditional use permit while located within the general commercial district. The subject property is designated on the future land use map as industrial, which is intended to permit heavier industrial uses. Staff has not received any correspondence in support or opposition to this request. The subject site is abutted by light industrial zoning from the north and west, and by general commercial zoning from the east and south. This is a survey of the subject property and showing the location of the lease space on building, on Space A on that building 1607. It's basically the southwest corner of the property. It's only about 800 square feet. This slide here shows the conformant's table. The proposed use appears to be consistent with the future land use plan as access to city utilities. However, the site does not conform to the area regulations of the commercial district, nor the Main Street overlay district. And this slide here shows how the property meets the criteria for approval for a CUP. This request was reviewed by the Development Review Committee, and staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit with one condition, that the use shall be limited to the 800-square-foot lease space as indicated by the applicant. And the city council may also adopt any additional conditions related to facade or landscaping as they may see appropriate. With that, I'll conclude my briefing and be happy to answer any questions.
Good. Thank you. Moving to item number two. This applicant presents, the applicant here would like to make a presentation. You have the podium. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for allowing me to be here this evening.
Could you give us your name and address to start it off?
Dustin Jackson, 1607 North Main, 77581. Many people often think, why micro-distilling? The main reason is it's an opportunity to be a part of three very important industries locally, as well as in the state and in the U.S., and that's agricultural, science, and technology. 85% of the resources that we will use are locally sourced from the Pearland and Greater Houston area. The other 15% will come from our sister city, Beaumont, Texas. We plan on continuing to make sure that all of our ingredients are always state utilized and state represented. The business to bring, this business will bring a unique likeness to the Pearland area for progressive development and commerce. We will provide and produce two spirits, a vodka and a specialty bourbon. Most people will agree that proper spirits should be drank, not mixed. And we have formulated two spirits that are powderable right out of the bottle and can be tempered by just adding ice, water, or garnished with lemons, limes, or ginger sticks. One of the things that is very important to us, because I also live here in Pearland, is to make sure that the facility that will only be in production and warehousing, we will not do retail sales. The facility is too small, and what we wanted to do is get our product out on the market. So we were looking for a large enough space that would allow us to do that and not bring too much negative attention to the area in which we were residing. Things go great, and we'll probably be here again in another year or two, trying to get a conditional use permit for three or four acres somewhere because it's been that successful. But like I said, I also live here. And one of the things that is very important to us is to make sure that our facility was safe. Many people who understand the alcohol industry productions have fears of catastrophic failures, explosions. And that's a very real thing. About two years ago, BJ Hookers, a vodka distillery, North Houston, off of 45 exploded. One of the reasons why we won't have that problem is because we're not going to use natural gas. Most distilleries use natural gas because it's cheaper. We're going to incur the cost and use electric heating elements, which prevent fire hazards. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Good. Moving in our agenda to the next item, which is item number B. Planning and zoning, city council and staff discussions to represent their feelings, starting with the planning and zoning commission.
Excuse me, Mayor. I think we might have missed step three, persons wishing to speak for or against.
Yeah, we need a.
Yeah. At the city council, we have persons wishing to speak for or against the proposed request. Yes.
If you don't mind, Mayor, I'll take that. If there are anybody in the audience that would like to speak either for or against this proposed conditional use permit? Any member of the audience like to speak either for or against this proposed conditional use permit? Any member of the audience like to speak either for or against proposed conditional use permit? Looks like we're clear, Mayor.
Okay. Now we've down to the planning commission, city council, and staff discussion. Mr. Chairman?
Start with Julie.
I don't have any comments.
There's no further comments, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next item is city council. Councilmember Orlando?
Nothing from me yet, Mayor.
Okay. Councilmember Reed?
Just a few questions of the applicant, well, actually of staff first. I'm assuming, obviously, if the applicant's presenting today, that everything is legal as far as being able to have a, not a microbrewery, because we have that, but something that can manufacture vodka and alcohol like that?
Yes, sir. So it would comply with the zoning regulations that the city has. The applicant would still need to get the appropriate license for the facility based on what the applicant is looking to do. The biggest concern with most of our alcohol regulations are meeting the 50/50 requirement with the food and beverage handlers. But because he doesn't intend to serve on-site, that's not going to be applicable at this case. But again, that's up to the TABC to tell him which license he needs for his business. And then before he gets his CO, he needs to provide a copy of that license to the city to verify that it's a legally operating establishment.
But he could, he could do like a St. Arnold's type concept, right? And you're not serving for money on-site, but you're like, kind of, or like the other brewery that we have, where you can taste the beer.
And for that, I'm going to defer to Darren Coker because he's had the conversations with TABC about that specific issue. And I think that there might be a couple of nuances with that, and I don't want to misstate that.
Okay. Thank you. In this particular case, of course, it's a liquor distillery as opposed to a brewery or a winery of that nature. But regardless, the only way that alcohol could be purchased on premise, well, purchased for consumption on the premise would be if they held a food and beverage certificate as indicated by Mr. Provence. So the question would be as far as whether this could end up becoming a St. Arnold's type situation. And the answer to that would be no. One, given the amount of space they have, but also they wouldn't have the necessary permits to be able to do so.
Okay. And I think with St. Arnold's, they don't sell alcohol. They sell the glass.
That's correct. They sell a lot of glass, and they also sell, there's a difference between, there's, beer is defined in the Alcohol and Beverage Code, and then there's, which is 5% alcohol or less, as opposed to beers that may be 7% or 8% alcohol. Those are classified actually differently or not considered beer under the Alcohol and Beverage Code, and you actually have differing permit requirements. In this particular case, they would not be authorized to sell beer because this would be a distillery strictly for, in this case, liquor.
What, St. Arnold sells tours. And as part of that tour, you get a glass and tokens, but so.
In that glass, you can put.
But you can go to the bar, but what you're paying for is the tour. So that's what, that's a very distinct thing they ensure that the people know.
Oh, no, 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 no. I'm 100% aware of that. From a legal standpoint, it's genius, right? And so, you know, they sell you this tour, and if you want some beer while you're here on my tour. And so, you know, I was wondering if the same thing would be allowed for his distillery, you know?
And that would not be allowed. Actually, they would not be able to allow any consumption on-premise in the absence of a food and beverage certificate.
Or free, even if I pay for the tour?
There's actually a separate permit. For instance, if you go to some liquor stores, there's actually a tasting permit issued by the TABC for tasting in those stores, where they can give samples. But that's a separate permit. Again, that's permitting requirements. They would have to get through the TABC and not something that would be issued by the city.
Of course, it would always be in council's discretion to make a conditional approval of the CUP. One of the conditions being that no alcohol be served or consumed on-site if that's what council was looking to do.
Well, and I guess the biggest thing is, I think, I think something like that is good. You know, especially if it turns into like a Tito's or something like that that's nationwide. I would love for, you know, Tito's bottles, say, from Pearland, Texas, right? And that it was distilled here in Pearland. You know, the only, the only thing that I fear would be, and Councilmember Perez just mentioned it as well, would be someone, you know, leaving, leaving the facility, you know, intoxicated, right? And so, but that's not, that's not the plan. But if it was the plan or if that was the thought, I wanted to make sure I went ahead and asked those questions, you know, upfront, to kind of see what that would look like. But ultimately, I mean, you know, just like the beer that's brewed here, I mean, I, I think it's good, you know, we never know where your company's going to go. And we've had other things that have come and some that have gone. And so, you know, hopefully, hopefully you do well once you get started. Yes, Mayor.
Okay, good. Councilmember Perez?
Thank you, Mayor. I think I'll dovetail into what Member Reed said. I mean, I want you to still hear, I don't have a problem with the use. I think that we have yet, we have yet to have a successful referendum that allows for off-premise, well, we allow for off-premise liquor sales. We don't allow for, essentially, bars or non-ice houses. I think if we just acquiesce and say, we're going to leave it to TABC and hope that they give us the prohibition. If they don't, then we've issued the CUP, but we don't necessarily want what could couple with that. So I would like to add as a condition to this, to this use permit, that we not allow any consumption on-site. I don't think that would interfere with your ability to distill, and I would presume that you have no objection to that. So it would be independent of what CUP. I presume that there's no inability for us to do that from a legal standpoint, correct?
No, sir. That would be a condition that you can attach to a conditional use permit.
Okay. So, if I may, when we get to the second part of this joint special meeting and we get into action, that we'll offer an amendment to allow that condition or to add that condition to the use permit. That's all I have, Mayor.
Here, Councilmember Moore?
Yes, Mr. Jackson, if you come up to put in my, just have a question. I just want to know, are you aware of all the UDC requirements, so everything that you'll have to do to the building as far as the facade requirements and all that and you're okay with that?
Yes, we're working on that, efforting that as we speak.
Okay, because I know it's probably an aluminum building warehouse?
Yeah, it's a hybrid, yes. And part of it, the owner has acknowledged that that's owner upgrades and then there's my part.
Okay. I just want to make sure you're aware of all the facade requirements for it and not get into it and realize, ooh, that's too much. And thank you for bringing your business to Pearland and we look forward to long prosperous years of you being here.
So do I and more growth.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
You top it, Mr. Ruins.
Okay, Mayor. When you read this, it just says that which beer, wine and other alcoholic beverages are brewed, fermented, distilled for distribution and consumption and then under the appropriate state of Texas license. So, if we approve this and he got the license from Texas, could he get the Texas state license to, for consumption or does he have to come back to the city?
Yeah. As far as consumption, one, that would violate any amendment that would prohibit the consumption that would be attached as a condition, but secondly, are you, are you talking about consuming the alcohol on the premise?
Yes.
Yes, and again, under state law, he would not be able to do that without a food and beverage certificate, meaning they had to get at least 50% of their proceeds from food and beverages other than alcohol, so.
Is that what they do with them, when they bring the food truck in?
That is one of the attempts they do to, to, to deal with that issue.
Yeah, you know, you see a lot of these now that, especially the vodka is coming out of Austin, different places now, but it's going to Galveston. And, and I guess they're distilling it in Galveston, there's about three different companies that are down there now that move from farther north down to the southern part of the state. Well, I guess if you're going to make it and sell it, get it out of here, that, that shoots me down on another liquor store, doesn't it?
You still want to do this?
That's all I have, Mayor.
That completes your comments. Does that wrap up most of council comments?
I have, I have one more quick comment, Mayor. So, you're only, you're only doing a bourbon and a vodka?
Yes, that's all we're doing.
If, if he does anything other than that, would he have to come back for some other permit?
It wouldn't, unless you attach or limit this CUP to bourbon and vodka, it would be for any liquor authorized by his TABC permit.
Okay, so that would, that would exclude beer?
That would ex, yes, because it's, it's a liquor one, but if, if he wanted to add rum to the list, you know, that, just another liquor.
Okay, thank you.
Want to see if he'll make some moonshine?
We have one more comment, Mayor.
Okay.
We have, we have one more comment.
One more comment? Okay.
I kind of have a comment and a question. I know we're trying to limit them on the CUP, but I'm assuming they're going to have to have some kind of quality control. Somebody's going to have to taste it on site before they bottle up and ship it off, so I don't want to just limit them to saying that you have to, no one can taste it or consume it.
If you don't mind, I'll go in. That would not necessarily apply to somebody working, you know, for them as far as their testing process. What it means is for, for sale for commercial purposes on premises and consumption on premise by, by consumers.
If he wants to hire 20 people a night, I guess there's a loophole.
Those are marketing consultants.
It's 800 square feet and those 20 employees would need a place to park.
Right.
Councilmember Moore?
I just had a quick comment. I, I understand the concern about being safe as it pertains to alcohol, but there are no shortage of places that you can drive down Broadway right now and, and go and have and enjoy hard liquor beverages. I just, being part of the, the upcoming strategic planning discussions that are going on for the city, one of the things that we hear over and over again is there's not a whole lot to do in Pearland and we have, we have a lot of great things going for us, but, you know, people find themselves venturing outside of the city limits in order to, for entertainment options. And so, the applicant seems to be a good support, but, you know, I, I think that if anything, I would like to encourage diverse entertainment offerings like a tasting room or something as opposed to putting roadblocks for, for things like that. And I just think that's something, just kind of a mindset to think about going forward as we embark on that vision of making Pearland a city with those additional amenities and entertainment options.
Okay.
And I'll jump in on that too, especially if, if he expands and it ends up being a larger facility. Right now, he may not be able to do that, but if you expand, I, I would hate to tie his hands on that with, you know, a larger facility with the room to have, parking and et cetera.
Right, and that is part of the expansion, but we're not trying to put the cart before the horse. We would just like to get in production and see how it goes. And if we do expand and we're right back here, that's not a problem either.
I may be a question for legal. I mean, before that could be permitted, we would need a referendum to modify the 5149 rule, correct?
That is correct. What, what we're talking about here, to be able to sell the alcohol without having to sell all the food with it, because it could be done with a food and beverage certificate as we, we discussed earlier, but to do so without that, it would require a referendum and it would have to go to the voters as a local option election. That is correct.
Well, I, I think he wants to sell tours and not, you're not talking about selling alcohol.
He's going to have a stack of glasses for sale. Yeah, and then you got to test drive the glass.
Tours and glasses.
Also, I, I just went to St. Arnold's a few weeks ago and I spent more on my charcuterie board and whatever than the beer, so I think he could make the 51% thing work.
No one bought beer, only tours.
Yeah, I would just hate to make a motion that tied his hands on that.
I mean, I think, I'll, I'll propose it. I think that in keeping with, in keeping with the consistency of the referendum not being successful, that we, we maintain that consistency, we maintain the intent of what the citizens have, at least what I would say the citizens have communicated to us is that they, they're not yet ready to go over that 5149 rule, but if, you know, if, if on the chances that they do initiate that referendum and the vote's successful, he could certainly come back to amend the CUP to allow it.
But if we make this motion that ties his hands to even get a food, a food permit and be able to do that just like other places do?
I mean, I think, in theory, yes. I mean, he'd have to put some work into it, but what we don't want, I think, is a, is the more readily available loophole to where he can say, like, remember Reed said, I'm selling glasses, I'm selling tours and it's a taste test. And if we don't, if we don't put that prohibition, there's kind of an end around to the 5149 rule with, I'm not selling alcohol, I'm selling these other components and as long as TABC doesn't object to it, and TBC, as near as I can understand, is not going to consult our local zoning amendments before they issue the permit, then we could end up having something that is a, a clear technical loophole against the, the 5149 rule. I am in support of overturning the 5149 rule and I will, I have and I will sign the petition, but I think right now, if that's the rule of the land, we...
I understand where you're coming from. We just don't know what's going to happen, you know, we don't know who's going to be sitting up here and how they think in two years or three years from now when his business expands and then it's in his, you know, his use that he can't do that, so then he uproots his business and moves elsewhere that does allow him to do that. That's just, I'm just trying to prevent that from happening.
Well, we got something on the table in front of us. He didn't ask for the other stuff, so let's move forward.
Moving back, coming back to our agenda now, we have a staff wrap-up to have an opportunity to make comments.
So, based what I, based on what I'm hearing, there'll be two conditions. The first one shall be limited to the 800 square feet. If they choose to expand, they'll have to come back based on that condition, they'll have to come back and do another CUP and no consumption on site. That will wrap up staff comments.
Well, I, I don't, I don't know that, I don't, I don't know about limiting his expansion without coming back. That, that kind of sounds ridiculous. Is that, is that something that needs to be done, Darren?
Well, we put the condition, the first condition that staff drafted was to limit it to 800 square feet. The lease space that he choose...
If they want to go beyond the lease space into adjacent space, they would need to come back for the, the additional space they would add.
And that's not any different than anybody else, any other business.
Okay, okay. A complete staff report?
But I, I don't know, I, I think that should be a, a motion and a vote on the consumption on, on site.
Yeah, because I, I mean, if he goes to TABC and he gets whatever permit to sell tours, I mean, whatever they're doing, I mean, I think that's his, I, yes, it's prerogative. So, and what, from what Darren just said, I mean, technically can go and, and get a tasting permit, so, and that's between him and TABC. I, I don't really see why we want to say no consumption. It's, at this point, like Councilmember Perez mentioned, I mean, it's kind of stated that you need food, you know, but if he gets a separate permit that says otherwise, then, and that, that's not a, that's not a, that's, the current law is not put in by us, it's, you know, we just fall under, under...
TABC and the county.
TABC, or the local, local, the local option.
I would say this, if we, if, if we, when we go into the next part of the meeting, if we, when we present it as is clean, it does not have that, that modification in it or about not allowing consumption on site. I was the one that proposed it, but I will leave it to any other member who wants to offer it as an amendment. I will second, but I won't offer it. If nobody else wants to offer it, we'll just, we'll just vote for the amendment clean. I think that's it, Mayor.
Okay. Let me proceed then in my agenda items. At this point, our discussion has morphed into a city council new business item and I'll ask Councilmember Moore to place this on the table as an item for us to address.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration possible action, resolution number R2019, CUP 1900006, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary?
Councilmember Moore, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
No. Aye.
Is that an aye? Councilmember Orlando?
Can you confirm what we're voting on? We're voting on the first amendment or?
It's on the first amendment.
No amendment.
There's that item of...
Yeah, aye.
Okay, Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Got to come back and try it.
Motion passed, five to zero.
Did you vote aye or no? We're ready to move on to the next item, Mayor.
It's called cogitating.
Congratulations. Let me know when I have a tour. Can you stay open late on Monday nights?
After the council meeting.
All right.
Give me a word.
We are ready, Mayor.
He said yes? Okay. We have, we have, was that a yes?
Yes, Mayor, well, that's, that motion passed.
Okay, Madam Secretary, let's run that one through.
That motion passed, Mayor.
We're good, we're good to move on to the next item, Mayor, the next conditional use permit.
Mr. Garcia has been here all night waiting on this.
Just, just want to clarify, was he passed clean without any conditions?
That's correct.
Okay.
It was passed as presented, as presented in the motion.
Have you run the joint special, Madam Secretary?
Yes, Mayor, we're ready now for the last joint special meeting, number three.
Okay. We're moving into the next special meeting, which is a joint special meeting, just similar to the other, but the last one we have in this category. Madam, Ms. Chairman of the planning commission?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request by Tim Garcia, applicant and owner for approval of a conditional use permit, CUP, to allow for truck, heavy and bus rental or sales on two tracts of land totaling .78 acres located within the general commercial GC district. Location is 3117 South Main Street, Suite 107.
Okay, that information in the record. Let's move to the next item A, application information, case summary, staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, this is a request for a conditional use permit to allow truck heavy and bus rental or sales on a, on two tracts of land totaling .78 acre and it's located within the general commercial district. The applicant proposes to locate a U-Haul dealership in conjunction with their existing business operating out of this location, located at 3117 South Main Street, Suite 107. A U-Haul dealer is classified in the Unified Development Code as truck heavy and bus rental or sales, which is defined by the UDC as the rental or sale of new or used panel trucks, vans, trailers, recreational vehicles or motor-driven buses in an operable condition where no repair work or intensive cleaning operations are performed. This use requires approval of conditional use permit. As I stated, staff has not received any correspondence in support or opposition to this request. The subject property is abutted by the general commercial zoning from the, from the northeast and south and by the light industrial zoning from the west across Main Street. This, this light, I'm sorry, the proposed use conforms to the land, future land use plan, future land use map and has access to city utilities. The proposal also conforms, does not conform to the area regulations of the general commercial district nor the Main Street overlay district. This is the, this is a summary of the criteria of approval for a CUP. Request is reviewed by staff, I'm sorry, this is, this is a survey of the property and shows the location of the existing buildings on the property. And the staff has reviewed this request and recommends approval of the request with two conditions. The first one is the applicant shall provide a site plan meeting the parking requirements for truck, heavy and bus rental or sales at a space, at one space per 1, per 1,500 square feet of gross floor area and auto parts sales at one space per 200 square feet of gross floor area. Basically, those are the two ratios for the two uses within the building. The second condition will be that all parking of pickup trucks, vans, moving trucks and trailers...
Hold on, we just lost four of them.
Shall be parked...
We got to hold on, we, we lost four of them. Hold on.
Mayor, do you want to announce a recess for a...
Mayor, do you want to announce a recess for five minutes?
What do you want to do now?
Well, then if we just kindly wait until the quorum comes back in the room.
Yeah, okay. Let me cover with a lock on the table. Are you on the staff, staff report?
As I indicated before, that the staff recommends approval of this request with two conditions, and I've read those conditions. The second condition was that all parking of pickup trucks and vans, moving trucks, and trailers shall be parked behind the fence and not displayed along the roadway. Should a display area be required, then a screening should be provided to bring the site into compliance with the corridor overlay district. That concludes the staff report.
I complete your report.
That is correct.
Okay, moving to application. Present is the applicant here tonight. You have the privilege of the podium, and thank you for being patient.
Hello, my name's...
Give us your name and address, so the record will know who's talking.
I'm Garcia. Address is 3117 South Main, Pearland. As far as the, the U-Hauls, I just noticed up here it's stating that these U-Hauls need to be behind the fence. The only problem that we have there is U-Haul is a 24-hour type deal where people can go online and rent these and pick them up, where we have drop boxes or key locks outside on the fence that are mounted where they can pick them up 24 hours a day. And I need to see if there's anything we could possibly do as far as having them accessed outside, because I have the pavement to put them. We're not actually putting a bunch of them out there, just enough to keep the customers coming 24 hours a day. That's about it.
I appreciate your comments on that, yeah, thank you. Moving to the next item on our agenda, item three, Councilmember Perez, person wishing to speak for or against the proposed request.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Any member of the audience like to speak either for or against this proposed conditional use permit? Any member of the audience would like to speak either for or against this proposed conditional use permit? In final time, any member of the audience like to speak either for or against proposed conditional use permit? No takers, Mayor.
Okay. Moving to item B, to give the planning commissions, City Council, and staff discussion an opportunity, I'll ask the Planning and Zoning Commission to...
Any commissioners?
... share your thoughts.
Have a comment or a question?
I think the, I think meeting the cities or the plannings recommendations is going to be fairly difficult, and I think recommendation number one really should be completed, I'm not sure about number two.
Question I have for staff is very similar forklift operation just to the south. I don't see much difference between the U-Haul business and the forklifts that are on display behind a fence that you can see through. So I want to make sure we're fair in any, anything we do, any requirement of this CUP to this business so that we're not being unfair to the, to the applicant. Understanding you have to have access. The UDC would require a lot more for, for a business to come in on a blank piece of property and meet all of those requirements. So that's my only comment.
Number two seems unfair. If it, if they're parked neatly and it's part of the business for him to, for them to be renting 24 hours a day, parking them behind the fence, there's a Home Depot right by my house and there's Penske trucks parked everywhere, all the time, being rented, and they're never behind a fence. And so I don't understand number two either.
I agree with the last two comments. I think we need to use some less restrictive means. We don't want to run them out of business before it gets into business.
I think if you look up and down this corridor, you're gonna see other auto facilities that do have vehicles parked right up front. I think the concern with this might be utilizing those vehicles as signage, and so I don't know, is there, are there any restrictions in this district regarding signage or using vehicles as, as a sign, as advertising your business?
They have U-Haul written on the side of them, correct? I don't think there's much we can do about that.
Excuse me, Mr. Garcia, our, our system can't record your comments unless you're at the microphone. Thank you, sir.
As far as on the U-Hauls, all the U-Hauls, the U-Haul on the side, the trailers, the trucks, and there's no actual way to remove it, and as far as U-Haul, they will not let us remove it. And we're not actually putting them out there for advertisement, they're actually being out there because people go online, they rent them, and they pick them up after hours. There's some people that pick them up one, two o'clock in the morning, but they have access to the key code that's on the gate where the keys are, and they could take the truck pretty much anytime they want.
Right, I have no objections to it as long as it's not in violation of other...
Right. And as far as U-Hauls, when we line them up out there, they're nice and neat. I try to keep my places neat as possible.
Let's complete your comments. Okay, moving to item two is City Council, and I'll start with Councilmember Orlando.
No comment from me yet, Mayor.
Okay. Councilmember Reed?
Mayor, can, yeah, can you come back to me?
Come back to you.
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Thank you, Mayor. Staff, maybe you can help remind me, what was the other, the last U-Haul use that we had a conditional use permit for? It was on the, was it the Shell station at what?
Broadway and Garden.
Broadway and Garden. If I remember correctly, we, we put a kind of a, kind of an effort to ensure that they had the trucks screened. Is that not correct? And we pushed them, told them they had to push them behind the building.
Correct.
Screen them.
If I may, it's not about the fence, per se, it's just as much about the corridor overlay district, there's supposed to be a 30-foot setback. That doesn't exist here, there's obviously parking, we're not gonna make them tear that out, but in an effort to meet the idea of improving the aesthetic, the look and feel of this area, the only other place they can put them is behind the gate, and so that's why, why we asked for that.
Yeah, I mean, I think you're seeing my thunder a little bit. I mean, I, I don't have any problem with the use, the use is fine, it's now, you know, what are we trying to do with the corridor and how are we fair to everybody else that we put through? Either, they don't have a CUP and they don't have the opportunity to be alleviated this, of these restrictions, because they're not here for a conditional use permit. So with, for your edification, so because you're here to get a conditional use permit, we can actually modify the UDC to fit this use if we feel like it's purposeful to allow your use. So we can amend things to be lighter than what the Unified Development Code would require of others. And that's where I have consternation with respect to not allowing, not, not doing staff's recommendation here is because, I do agree with you, people are gonna come get a U-Haul late at night, and I don't think there's a prohibition against us allowing for that, that there's nothing that says the gate has to be enclosed or even, it can't be open at all times, but I, you know, I, I know the individual that owns a Frontier forklift, he has a lot of issues with us forcing his forklifts to be out, off of the, the roadway and in the back, and we've, I mean, it certainly is hurting his business, he's explained to us how it hurts his business and we still have required it of him. I don't know if I could be fair to him, fair to the last CUP applicant where we forced them to push them in the back and by allowing you to do something that we made them do. I think the use is fine, I think that we need to be, in order to be fair to all of the others that we, we've had to deal with on this, that we, we have to find a way to screen it. Maybe we can find something else other than a fence, maybe it's on some kind of landscaping, I don't know, but I mean, I think, I think we have, it's just not, it doesn't feel right for me to allow you to do something I haven't allowed to do. The use is a yes. All I have, Mayor.
That's it. For Moore?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Then I guess we need to have Code Enforcement go around and cite everybody that has these vehicles parked out in front of their place, all these storage facilities down on Broadway, the Home Depot with the Penske trucks, up here off Dixie Farm and Broadway, multiple other places, and the Shell station, we required the trucks to be on the side of the building, not behind the building, and that's where they stayed at, they were parked on the side of the Shell station between Garden and the actual building. I, I don't have an issue with this, especially in the, the area where it is, it's zone GC, but across the street is industrial M1, so I don't, I don't know, I don't really have an issue with it having to be screened, but if, maybe we need to pull the UDC on this piece here and talk about it on what's proper for screening on rental trucks and forklifts and stuff like that, that way it's fair to everybody and does help some of the people that are suffering by having to keep their stuff behind the fence. So if we could get an agenda item on that sometime in the near future.
Councilmember Owens?
Just one question, where are they gonna be parked at? It's non-permeas parking area, right? It's either concrete, asphalt, or whatever. You're not gonna, you can't park them on the grass or anything like that. Okay. I don't have a problem with this where it's at.
Okay. Staff wrap up comments?
I don't have any additional comments, sir.
No further comments, all right. At this point, of course, our discussion morphs into a City Council new business item, and I'll ask Councilmember Owens if he will place this on the agenda as a City Council new business item.
On resolution number R2019CUP190005, I still move.
Second.
We have a second motion and a second. Madam Secretary, we have a motion second on the floor.
Councilmember Owens, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Motion passed, five to zero.
All right. That completes item three of the special meeting, which is a little bit different than the other set of meetings.
We're being through it.
And brings us to a point of adjourning for tonight. Thank all of you for being here, this seems to be complex, but good results and, and things that we do need to wind up with, with a little time spent on them, so thank you for being here. There being no further business for this council meeting tonight. We are adjourned at, what is that, nine forty-five, nine, excuse me, nine fifty-five.